Just an update and a time for questions. We will be doing this probably once a week with the board. For anybody who's out there, we'll make sure we give a heads up on when these meetings will be. Right now, we, I hate to say this, but this abnormal distance learning thing is beginning to feel normal, I think, in the last few days. Not in terms of anybody's happy with it, but we're getting accustomed to sort of the routine, I think. That said, there's still a lot of learning and evolution involved in terms of instruction. We have healthy conversations going on at the high school on what hold harmless grading actually means, and we're working towards some collaborative solutions there and really grateful for the healthy conversation and for Hatta working so closely with us on it. Food service is going well. We've now pushed out to the Grove Street Apartments, the apartments behind Wright Ait and West Grant, Foss Creek Apartments, and then the Canyon Run Apartments, and we're serving on each of those campuses daily. Yesterday Debbie told me we were up to 700 meals served, which is our highest.
Wow.
So we're doing a grab and go format, which is breakfast and lunch in one bag. We are trying to support as many local farmers and businesses as possible, buying a lot actually from Custo Bakery as part of an effort to just sustain the local economy. And so we're pleased that this move out to the various apartment complexes has been fruitful because we just want to get hands and, you know, food in the hands of the people who need it. We are making headway instructionally with technology. Chromebooks have been distributed to the students in elementary school who didn't have access to a device. We estimate around 40 to 50 families still don't have, or students still don't have connectivity in the district, otherwise everybody does. And we've ordered another round of hotspots, running into some issues with rural folks just being able to access even a hotspot based on where they live. You know, if you're way out Chalk Hill Road or Deep West Side Road, it's, there's not a lot of cell service, nor is there a way to get reliable internet. So doing some workarounds on that, getting paper into the hands of those students, alternatives to what's happening online, and then working, you know, to see if we can find a hotspot that would work. We have been working diligently this week on a new frequently asked questions page for the website, some FAQs for families. There's just a lot of information that keeps coming at us, and I don't want to continue to fill people's texts and inboxes on a daily basis. And so what we're going to do is post some FAQs and just send a reminder periodically that they're there, and maybe here's an update on something important. We're waiting to post them until we do finish this conversation around grades with the high school, because we want grading practices to be a big part of that. So we're hopeful that we'll have it up by the end of the week. We obviously, as you're aware, are officially suspending in-person classes through the rest of this school year. I will say it's not starting, it started to not look so good for June, so we don't anticipate that we're going to be able to start in-person school. So we will start the high school summer school program as a virtual program, most likely in June for kids who are credit deficient and need to make up. So we're pivoting there. And of course, we are just really sad for our seniors. So the senior class, you know, it just cannot be said enough like how devastating this is for those kids and parents, you know, it's a rite of passage for both in a lot of ways. And so we're looking at alternatives to graduation and prom and what we can do. There's, Bill has, Principal Bill Halliday's created a committee of parents and staff and kids to work on solutions and ideas that they have. So we can celebrate those seniors, so they have a, you know, they have a rite of passage in a sense of closure with high school. But, you know, I remember my own graduation in that grad night, and you knew it was kind of the last time you were all going to be together, and it was special because of that. And these kids aren't ever going to really have that opportunity, which is just, which is really sad. It does seem unlikely that we would be able to postpone graduation and hold it in August based on what we're seeing in the news today. Seems like large events are not going to be feasible here for a while. So we may not be able to have a graduation, but we'll do something virtually to celebrate them, maybe a virtual graduation, something like that. So Bill and his committee are working on it, and we want to celebrate them as much as possible and work around the parameters that we have. So any questions about anything that's going on? I do, I agree with the comment there, Ali Alkisar posted, our food service staff has been amazing, so is our maintenance staff and so have our teachers. Everybody has really stepped up to the plate to meet needs as they've come, and it's been amazing to watch. I've never been prouder to work in Hillsburg. So the fact that we're serving 700 meals to our kids, and then we're pushing out to Geyserville and West Side and Alexander Valley, and here and there supporting the homeless population too, is a testament to just how committed this district and its staff are to this community, so.
Yes.
No, I just hope we keep, I mean, I know you will, keep it, if there's any inkling of a chance, we could have some gathering for those graduates would just be.
Yeah.
I agree, Jamie.
You know, just, I mean, I don't want to make any final decision. I'd almost say, okay, it's on, it's on, everybody, you know, run direct park, just keep it as open as we possibly can. I know Mr. Halliday, that's in his heart of hearts. I just don't want to pull, I don't want to make any blanket statements until.
Yeah.
I just.
It's a fine line to walk between that and not giving a false expectation too, you know, so it's a tough one.
I understand.
But I think if we were all to be able to come together, it might not be till September or October, so we'll see. Yeah, again, that's just me reading the news and hearing tidbits here and there, so.
I hope you're wrong.
Me too.
I hope I'm wrong tomorrow, yeah.
All right, sounds good.
Well, I would just, you know, kind of reiterate what you said, Chris, and hopefully our principals can communicate this to the teachers and the classified staff of truly what a great job they're doing. You know, I hear from parents, I hear from kids, few kids, and I'm kind of like amazed as to you're doing what? And the parents are thrilled because their kids are learning and, you know, the food services, the maintenance, et cetera. But, you know, I'm impressed. I brag about Hillsburg Unified.
Thank you.
So get the message out, principals, I guess, let them know that we know.
We're actually, Half is going to work on a piece for the Tribune, just about how, you know, nobody wants to be in this position, but it's going as well as it could, and just how amazing our staff has been, so.
I have a question about, are we hearing from the families or the, I don't expect this from the students, that we're giving enough work, that they, I mean, that they have enough to do? Do you know what I'm saying? Are there alternate assignments that they can go to if you've got kids that are maybe getting their work done, and now they're, you know, it's 11 o'clock and.
I know a lot of teachers have been posting some open-ended stuff, so you can run with it. We've created a parent resource page, so that if you do feel like you've run out, I know, you know, everybody's pulling their hair out to an extent, right? And so obviously, we can't, we can't create sanity in your home, but we can give you some ideas for what you can do to extend learning and maybe make some new learning.
Right.
So we have a parent resource page already up with lots and lots of ideas. And it's been a mixed bag. We get from some parents that there's not enough. We get from some parents and kids that there's too much, and it really depends on context and situation for everybody as they kind of encounter this crisis in different ways, so.
Sure, but having those resources, I think, is a nice thing to be able to refer parents to or.
And there's great, there's, you know, I don't know if you've seen it, I'd encourage you to take a look, Greta Messix, the librarian, there's just a few examples. She's reading in Spanish and posting YouTube videos of her doing her life every day, right? So there's all kinds of different things that are getting posted that are helpful, so.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I do want to interject that actually has to do with the next item, but is really, we're not going to talk about it, is, well, we are going to talk about waiving some graduation requirements at the next item because of this crisis. One thing that we're not going to have to bring to the board that Bill and, Bill Halliday and I discussed yesterday is there is a PE requirement, a two-year PE requirement for graduation for every high school student. So freshman PE is mandated by the state, and then your sophomore year of PE, you can actually get credit for by participating in two full seasons of sport in the high school. And anybody who is a senior and was counting on the spring sport as being their second season, and there's a lot of, or there's a few of them, would have lost that opportunity and been ineligible, right? And so what Bill has done, because it's similar to hold harmless grading, if you made the team and you were participating as of March 13th on the team, we're going to give you the full credit for that class. Therefore, there will be no reason to waive that requirement. So I just wanted to make you aware of it, we won't have to talk about it and bring it to the board, but it is a way that we can make an exception so that we can get some kids graduated, so.
Great. That would be a double insult to take away their season to play and then say you graduate because you couldn't play.
Right.
So that is a logical solution to the issue, for sure.
And Chris, I wanted to just go back to another shout out, because I know that Connie and the high school team had reached out to those students that they hadn't heard from, and I just want to, I just think that is just so beautiful, and I know that other districts are really impressed with the structure of how organized that was and how that outreach was happening. So I just want to thank you guys for doing that.
Yeah, not only, not only organized and far-reaching, but very compassionate, too. Yeah, it's been great. Thank you. So can we move on to waivers for graduation?
And the other questions or comments about.
Is there a public comment? I see some from Jennifer Wagner. Jennifer, do you, would you like to make, Ms. Wagner, you want to make a comment, or do you want to just leave it in the chat room?
Someone want to read it?
What she wrote, she said, "I apologize if this has already been discussed as I came in late, but I'm really struggling with the fact that my daughter is feeling like there is no reason to complete her schoolwork now that they know they will not be receiving any credit for it. She's a high school freshman, I'm disappointed the high school chose to share this information with the students without even notifying the parents. Is there any way we can, or the high school can motivate students in good standing to keep learning? Yes." And there's more information coming out, so we have been discussing grading with the high school, and I think you will get something here in the next few days that will help address that. Also, okay, Corinne, we'll get you on the other ones. The, there, yeah, I would encourage you actually, Ms. Wagner, to talk to Mr. Halliday specifically, and he can maybe address some of the issues that are going on with your daughter in terms of motivation. But the way you understand the grading, I don't think is complete, and we can clarify that later, so.
There was another comment came up.
Yeah, Corinne Ephram wants to make a comment, but for items that are on the agenda later, I think. So we'll just, Corinne, let us know which items, and we'll make sure you get your time. Oh, now.
Okay, so unmute Corinne.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Okay, thanks. Well, I think, because you just discussed it, Chris, so I just wanted to say this, and last time I was on also, I wanted to say this before, but I really just wanted to first start out by giving you guys kudos. Okay, I'm very impressed and pleased to hear all that the district is compassionately doing to help all UHSD students and beyond with the food needs and the other needs I've heard, you know, with the Chromebooks, with getting pens and paper and crayons to some of the elementary school students, the hotspots, everything, and just hearing that the way that your, the food distribution has been made more accessible now is just really heartening, as well as hearing that it's helping other people outside of UHSD. So I just really wanted to, I know often, you know, we get on here and we're like complaining or something, but I just wanted to first give you guys kudos, to just say I'm really, really pleased and impressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, anything else?
I have, I think so, but I'm not sure if this is the right time. It's about the distant learning aspect of it, so do you want me to wait a second?
No, this is fine, this is, this is the, I think this is the only time.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I was just thinking about, I recognize it's the difficulty in managing distant learning and the flexibility that's required at this time. So, but if I understand it correctly, I'm a little concerned about, I mean, I understand what Jennifer's saying, I'm just forcing my child to do, I've, both of my kids, I just, I'm saying they have to do the work regardless of whatever is being put out from the school district.
Right.
But I have heard from other parents that they are struggling as well, and I was a little maybe confused about the junior highs, credit no credit piece of it, because I was, my understanding was that credit no credit happens now, so the grades that they had prior will just revert to credit no credit, and I'm not sure if that's accurate, so maybe I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that.
Thank you.
So I'm going to start by giving a little context. Every district in the nation is struggling with this right now. In fact, yesterday, LA Unified just came out with their agreement with their union, it was in the news, that no student, no matter if they had never shown up for school, if they're enrolled this year, nobody's getting an F, right? And so we have been engaged in a lot of discussions, how do you do grades? And grades, especially in the secondary school, really are of great consequence in high schools because of the college aspect and, you know, potential jobs that you would have to get that, you know, every once in a while in law enforcement, they ask for a transcript and things like that. In junior high, grades are not as big of a deal, right? We still want to give grades, we want to, you know, assess students and be able to recognize how they're doing and give them a grade that's commensurate with it. But they don't have this lasting effect that a high school grade does, that's memorialized for life. And so what we did as a district, very quickly at the junior high, they decided they wanted to go pass fail because they thought it was equitable, it honors sort of what every student's encountering, you know, Corinne, your kids and my kids have a very different context, and I know you're aware of this, than, than other kids in the district who don't have a quiet place to study and don't have potentially internet access, and they could be living with three families in a two-bedroom apartment. And so they wanted to make the path of least resistance for kids to pass their classes and be able to continue with their learning. And so they came up with the pass fail system. High school really didn't want to take a pass fail or a credit no credit way of going because it's too foreign for the college entrance process. While colleges are saying they will take a credit no credit type grade for this semester for all kids, we are just nervous about it. And so we're coming to terms with, you know, like I said earlier, some sort of grading policy that still is equitable and honors the effort that kids make in distance learning, but is also cognizant of the difficulties some kids have. So we're going to keep letter grades because we want to make sure our kids have no impediments to college entrance. But again, we got to make it equitable. So that's why the junior high went that way. I can tell you there's whole districts that have gone pass fail. So one of the first that the state actually recognized in their guidance on this was Palo Alto Unified, Santa Rosa Unified's gone, they actually went pass fail and pass plus, which doesn't, you know, it's just kind of like the bumper sticker of my students on the honor roll or whatever. So lots of districts are doing it different ways. You know, Cloverdale's actually doing, kids can choose at the end of the semester whether they want to be pass fail or a letter grade for each class. Roseland's keeping grades, Windsor is keeping grades, Petaluma's doing pass fail, so it's all over the map where schools are taking it. So we're looking at, like, like you said, at the junior high, credit no credit, mostly because it's equitable, it alleviates a lot of stress, and junior high grades are not as big of a consequence as a high school grade, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you. It worked, we had a public comment.
Hey!
All right, so.
Hey, does any other comments or questions on the coronavirus adjustments to the whole world and at school? Okay, so can we move on to 10.1B, a graduation waiver that you kind of just talked about?
Yeah, so Erin Fender's going to present this.
Hi, good evening. Appreciate the concern by everybody about grades and, you know, how to best serve all kids, right, at all various socioeconomic strata, learning background, it's a conundrum. And so thanks for the reminder to get more and, you know, repeat ourselves in information that's gone to students and families, so we'll be following that up. So we've been looking at high school graduation requirements for this class. As Superintendent Van Hooen mentioned, we were nervous about the students that were student athletes in spring sports, just a handful of kids. We think we've got most of it handled except for this one. We don't believe that there is a fair way for students who even needed one, two hours in their senior year to complete their structured service learning or volunteer requirement hours for this class. So what we're asking the board tonight to do is to waive for the class of 2020 only the 10 hours that would be needed for structured service learning and volunteer requirement for graduation. Pretty, pretty simple. Welcome to answer any questions or take any comments.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question and I guess a comment. First of all, no, no, I have no concerns about waiving, given the situation, obviously. But do we have any idea, well, I guess start with the seniors, how many seniors have completed this requirement and turned in the paperwork, et cetera? And then I guess my other question would be even further for the other classes, is there a button we can push and get a report? I'm not saying you have it now, but maybe at the next board meeting, just sort of information. I say that because I've been contacted by at least one community member, actually a couple, just wondering what's going on with this. And I said, I see us waiving this, the seniors, but I didn't know where we were with the rest of the high school. Just, again, is there a button we can push? Is it being recorded in areas? I don't know how it works.
Yeah, we do keep record of it, I don't have it on my fingertips, but we certainly can follow up even before the next board meeting with that data.
That'd be great, thank you.
Other comments or concerns or questions?
So I guess my other question would be, if 40 hours, let's take the current freshman class, they're required 40 hours, that's for the four years, correct?
Correct, over the four years, correct.
Over the four-year period.
That they do 10 years or 10 hours, right? Yeah.
And that would make sense. So would we waive in part five hours, you know, so instead of 40, it would be 30? I don't know, I'm just saying, it's like, oh, all of a sudden.
Yeah, we'd prefer not to.
I agree, I agree, I just wondered.
I think we're going to wait, yeah, I think, you know, we're all hopeful, we might be able to get to, back to some semblance of normalcy. I'll tell you, Mike, we're looking into other volunteer and service learning opportunities that aren't traditional, aren't serving at a food bank or, you know, planting trees, but there are activities that can be done online, we just didn't have the time to get this up and running.
I understand that.
Yeah, so right now, just this class, and we, you know, if we're headed into another round of this kind of, of learning next year, you know, we're already looking into other options that kids could undertake in a distance learning environment.
I mean, I think it's a great requirement for our kids to get involved in the community and get back and to learn, but I certainly understand in this past, this current semester, it ain't going to happen, at least anywhere I can see.
I would just like to kind of jump into that conversation, too. I know what you're asking is just pertaining to this year, and I, I think that's a great idea. It would be illogical to put that pressure on kids to try to scramble and do something just to get it done, but I'm curious to see exactly what this is really looking like. You know, we, we had it, then we did away with it, now we have it back with, I was, I'm hoping a little more structure and a little more focus with these community service hours, so maybe that could be something that eventually could be put on as an agenda item that we could take a peek at. That's just my request, that's a personal request.
I think Principal Halliday and I and others can work on that update for you guys.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Well, and it is such a fluid situation, you know, I think this is a good idea to let's look at what's most urgent right now, and then everything can be reevaluated as we go and ask more impacts. If there are more impacts, then we'll make other, you know, adjustments, right? That's the idea.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? We do need to vote on this, correct?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the wavering of the graduation public service hours for the class of 2020.
Lots of seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Moving on to C, English Language Development, next steps update.
Okay, so that's me as well, and there is a PowerPoint for this, so I think we're going to give Karen a minute to get that up. You know, I'll say that a month ago, when we had the presentation from Dr. Chris Nichols, our external evaluator, on a Wednesday evening, that Thursday, we got back to work and we started looking at each other saying, we got to get ready to do distance learning. This is not, you know, that Wednesday night into that Thursday, things happened real fast, and by that Friday, as you guys know, we've talked about this in other board meetings, you know, we were photocopying packets for kids and making sure our sixth through 12th graders had their Chromebooks and their chargers and their backpacks and heading home. So I want to make the statement, while this is as important as ever to us, we are not as far along in the planning process that we'd like to be, based on the evaluation, both based on our own work, given that we've spent the last three and a half weeks turning into a distance learning school district. So we do have some information to share, some things to reiterate, and, you know, we are having good conversations now. I think we're finally getting to a place as administrators and teachers that we might, we can look at beyond like the moment and the day and start doing that forward planning. So here's, here's some information, and I'm not going to go through, you know, every single PowerPoint in detail, there's a lot of language on there, but one thing that Dr. Nichols talked about quite, quite a lot in the report, and something that's been on our mind in the district, our students that are deemed long-term English language learners, about 85 to 92% of our kids at, between the junior high and the high school, are long-term English language learners. So it's not uncommon, you know, as it says here, beyond the normative timeframe of five to seven years, so most of our kids start with us, and we don't have a huge newcomer population in Hillsburg. We have handfuls of newcomers. We don't have a large migrant, or a large newcomer population. So our kids who get into junior high and high school and have not yet ARFED have always been a concern for us. There's this new term, the AR, at risk of long-term English language learners, and that helps us look even sooner at kids who aren't making kind of that, that forward progress that we would want to see, both based on the LPAC and when we get CASP scores for them. So just a little bit of terminology there to remind ourselves what monks, language learners, and at risk. And so if we can go to the next slide, Karen? These next two slides are taken, or pardon me, the next slide and then the fourth are taken directly from Dr. Nichols' report, and I think it's important to look again at this data, you know, the BP document had a lot of information in it, and to take a moment to digest this. So let me give everybody a second to look at this and to read. So you can see here that what is predicted in the research is playing out in Hillsburg, in that if we don't get kids ARFED in the grade school years, that the chance of them ARFED-ing diminishes, and the chance of them, quote, catching up to their peers becomes harder and harder every year. We are very proud of the percent of our FED kids we have in Hillsburg, right, that we are ARFED-ing double the number of kids, as she wrote in her report, that in terms of almost every other measure you can look at, in terms of academic achievement, from graduating to taking AP courses and everything in between, our kids do well who are ARFED. But we've got this, this tough nut to crack on students who aren't ARFED yet, and so let's go to the next slide.
Erin, can you, is there, can you tell us like the numbers? I know it's like 80% and 70%, but how many kids, I mean, I know that, and I know this next slide has a total number of kids, do we just sort of aggregate that over grades, eight grades, and kind of come up with an average in each grade that is in one of these two categories, or?
In, in, at risk of long-term or long-term? In, in, at risk of long-term or long-term?
Or, or both, like when I see this bar chart approaching 100%, you know, is that five kids? Is that 50 kids as students is that?
So, yeah, so let me, let me put some broad numbers on it and parts. Why don't you go ahead and go back one, Karen?
Sorry.
Okay. So let's use the high school for example. And they're nine, 10, 11, 12. For, basically since I've been in the district last four or five years, we generally have about 30 kids total at Hillsburg High. So those bar charts there of ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th graders represent a total aggregate of 30 children in our, in our school, roughly, 30 kids.
And basically by the time they get to the high school, they're long-term.
Yeah, right, because most of them start with us, right? Those few in 10th grade there are a handful of long-term English, or pardon me, handful of newcomers. So we generally have from two to five students who are new to the US school system. And then grades six, seven and eight, let's look at that for a minute. Generally, we have about 50 to 60 English language learners. So those three bars there represent 50 to 60 students total.
That's really helpful, especially in preparation for some of the other slides you have coming up. Thank you.
Yeah, those nine, 10, then 11, the high school students could have been long-term ELs. Maybe possibly since junior high.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Very possible.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So now what we're looking at here and a point that Dr. Nichols made to all of us is looking at not just English language learner status, but what she calls and others have called double and triple identified. So students, so you can see there down on the bottom. We ran this data, this is as of about a week ago. So this is data that I ran, and this is not from her report. This is, this is recent refresh data, so these are kids that are with us today. We currently have about 271 English language learners in the district. Of that, 243, 90% are socio-economically disadvantaged. So nine out of 10 of our English language learners also are socio-economically disadvantaged. If we keep going, you can see then students who are EL and SWD or student with a disability. So about 20% of our students who are EL have a learning disability. The average population of students generally runs around 10%. Diane could talk to you more about this. But 10% is your rough bar, so almost twice as much in our English learner population. And that's something that we need to watch very carefully. Is language acquisition or the deterrent of language acquisition happening because our program isn't serving them? Is it because of their learning disability? Are we doing both? Are we serving them as a student who is acquiring a second language? And ensuring that any modifications, accommodations and supports for their learning disability are being provided? So when you've got one in five kids in the, in a whole group. Thinking about that, so you know, when we talk, we're a small district, right? Out of 271 kids, being able to look at our students not only as a cohort of kids, but grade level, but individually and designing program around them individually. And then the triple identified there is the last number, English language learners who are socio-economically disadvantaged, SED, plus students who are students with disabilities. So that's the, they're, they're all three, triple identified is 17%.
Erin, can you clarify, what is the HSD? Is that just a typo or is that just the high school or?
Oh, sorry, yeah, it's a typo, it should say HUSD, thank you.
High-end high school, okay.
Yep, sorry, yeah, that's every, that's the district. And so, you know, we, we look at this data, we're looking more closely at it. I'll tell you, from Dr. Nichols' recommendations, the principals all have their school level data, class level data and individual student level data. And that is, you know, informing our program design. You know, this isn't a huge surprise to us that most of our English language learners are also socio-economically disadvantaged. But I think it's important as we kind of take stock in where we're at and where we want to go, that we pay attention to these factors as, as we go forward. So you're gonna see that, you know, play out in the program design as we move forward. And like I said, we wish we were further along and had more meat to provide you. I do have some, some significant changes to share at the middle school. We had a great conversation today, Principal McGuire and Principal Franny and I about the elementary program. They had done some homework before we went out, and I think we're, we're gonna be able to provide some good detail to you in the May board meeting for the elementary program. Any questions about, about? Well, let's, let's go to the next slide, actually, and then we'll do some questions on data. Okay, so this, this next slide, I'll give you a second to look at it, is providing a little bit of context about the at-risk and the long-term English language learners compared to similar districts. So I'm gonna give you a minute to look at that slide. While I don't want to diminish the fact that we have long-term English language learners and students who are at risk of becoming a long-term English language learner. I want to put it into some context in that we're not alone and that this is a tough nugget for districts everywhere. And that, you know, we're learning from them. You know, I've reached out to, we saw Calusa. And I reached out to our county office, EL coordinator Jen Guerrero and said, what do you know about Calusa? What are they doing? Because it was one of the few districts that Dr. Nichols could find that has better outcomes and data than we do. And she said, you know, it's interesting that you ask because the parent leadership conference that SCO puts on, big contingent of families that come from Calusa to the SCO Parent Leadership Conference. And that's about all she could tell, tell me. I emailed to Lusa and they're like, yep, we can talk, but give us a minute to get through some of the changes that are happening with distance learning. So we'll be looking at, you know, other districts that are doing better at us, than us. But I wanted to put it into a little bit of context as well. So any questions about the data before we move on to talking a little bit about program design? Or the data that I've shared or that's in the report?
I just appreciate the refresher. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, it was meaty. There's a lot going on in that report. So I think I'm trying to chunk it down a little bit. So what I'll, what I'm hoping to do is take elements of the report and kind of dig into it a little bit more. Okay, Karen, next slide. So I mentioned to you that the elementary principals and I have been engaged in conversation and they've been working closely with their staff to get input. Reading and rereading the evaluation. Pretty close to, to having something to share publicly. They're, they're gonna be doing some more vetting with their staff. And that, you know, this is not just a top-down conversation and decision-making process, but a bottom-up and that the teachers are a part of helping to craft this and understand. And, and so they, they have a part in it, that they, that they want to make any changes that we bring on. We're also, the second bullet there is investigating options for providers. We have the SCO EL Services Division lined up. We just decided today, we're gonna try to move forward with this and not wait until August. But to try to do this in, and this will focus, you know, Dr. Nichols talked a lot about needing to get better at understanding the ELD framework and the ELD standards. So Jeff and Erica are ready and are gonna fly it with their staff to try to do this PD in a remote kind of virtual format now, in probably early to mid-May with the staff. And as Principal Miller and Principal Halliday can attest, we've had a lot of conversations too about providers, what do they need? What does their staff need? What rings true for them from that report and making sure that we have the right trainers lined up? Both, you know, in the next couple of months and in the next couple of years. So we're starting.
A recommendation or even a requirement of minutes, instructional minutes for ELD? But I know that her recommendation did say daily, like every day of the week. So is that gonna be?
Yeah, it looks like that, that's definitely in the plans for TK through two. We're, I'm gonna be honest, we're struggling a little bit with how to make it daily. In three through designated being daily in grades three through five. With all of the other, you know, enrichment and sports and, or not sports, PE and other things. They're pushing in Spanish, so we're working really hard. But we don't yet have the, the daily worked out for FMC yet.
But is that a goal?
It is a goal, whether it happens in a in a small group or a station rotation within the class or sorting and resorting. So it is absolutely a goal that will happen, you know, designated ELD. But whether it happens like the whole grade level is moving daily or we're stationing, rotationing within the classroom daily. That's what we're, we're still having conversations about. And part of it, the, you know, Erica and Jeff can speak to it more. You know, one of the issues, good news, bad news about the specialists at, at FMC moving forward, having a STEM specialist and a humanities specialist. You know, while we all think it's the right way to go generally, it does create some more barriers for high youth personal time, because we've got kids switching teachers already throughout the day. So it just.
Which is a huge concern of mine, if that, if ELD is not gonna be, I mean, it just, as you know, it is an ed code. And to me, it's as sacred as IEP minutes.
Yeah.
And so that concerns me if we're not really gonna be providing designated ELD every day, especially when, for our third and fifth graders, because that's where we, that's where we develop our long, our at-risk LTS.
Yeah, so let me, let me clarify quickly in that it probably is not gonna look like a pullout or, or a in the classrooms in three through five, we have about eight English language learners per class. So it's, it's about providing really good designated ELD daily for them, both as a cohort of kids and providing the level that they need. We don't want that level one sitting next to that level four. And so there being some grouping and regrouping amongst the grade level. But also how can we get really targeted in the classroom? So hear me, that daily designated ELD is definitely a part of the plan. But each day may look a little different, whether they're grouping and regrouping as an entire fourth grade class or if they're grouping and grouping within their classroom.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarification, because I do think it's super important. It may, I could, I can understand that it may have to look different, but I think it's super important that we do provide daily designated ELD along with the integrated ELD. But I worry if we're not gonna provide that designated ELD on a daily basis.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So HH, we've got some really great planning that was already being talked about prior to Dr. Nichols' visit. You know, she mentioned, and I have too, that the, the great fortune we have in having Principal Miller on staff and that he's got a pretty deep ELD background prior to coming to Hillsburg. And so much of this thinking had already happened between himself and his staff prior to Dr. Nichols revealing her report to us. So we're able to move fairly quickly with this decision-making, because it already had been in the pipeline of talking with staff and planning master schedule. So you can see that, I'll give you a second to read. Let's, let's read the slide for a minute, because it's, it's beefy there. So the new hire there, we have, we have some change in staffing happening. I'm not sure how much I could talk about it, if it's, if it's out there. It's, it's both good and sad for our district what's happening. So I'll just leave it at that. So we are hiring right now, we have it posted. So if you know anybody who wants to teach English language development at a middle school, we're really excited to bring on a staff member and provide high-quality professional development and support for that person. So the big change here is providing a grade-level ELD course for, for each student, for each grade level in the junior high. So you can see there, ELD for sixth graders, that is aligned more fully to the core content. We've always tried to align to the core content, but when you're an ELD teacher and you have level four kids in your class, and some of them are sixth graders and some of them are seventh graders and some of them are eighth graders. Aligning to the various standards and the core content that's being delivered in the standard English language arts class is challenging, to say the least. And so we, given the numbers that we have and some of the, you know, just looking really deeply at the kids' needs, the level, the grade they're at, we think we're gonna be able to pull this off where we'll have an ELD class for sixth graders. And there will be, so the level threes and the level fours in there. We're gonna be really careful, because we're so small, we know we've got probably about, we've got a higher number of newcomers in the middle school than we traditionally have. It says there are eight students. So that'll be the level one and low level twos. And then we're, we're thinking deeply about how to ensure the, those kind of mid-level twos get that pop. So it's exciting to be able to do grade-level classes. It does add a point two FTE of ELD, so there is an expense there. But it's the right thing to do for our kids. The teachers are more on board with this than they ever had before. I think, you know, one of the good news, bad news things about the way that we did ELD in the past is that it was kind of a, it was taught by one teacher. And now we're gonna have multiple teachers teaching ELD. And the same teacher who teaches the grade-level course also teaching the ELD. So that natural fusion between their English language development class and their core content class taught by the same teacher, it's just easier, easier to do. It is, it takes some training, right? Because most of these folks got into the, while they're ELD credential and they hold the appropriate credentials, they are going to need more support and more training.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. One thing, just to clarify there, the last power, last point on the, the slide there, that we've, we've had a 20% FTE ARFEP mentor at the middle school for the last two years. And we're at a point similar to the high school where we believe that that person can both monitor and advise the ARFEP students and do some work with the English language learners. And so that 20% mentor, ARFEP mentor position will transition as we did in the high school this year. So their caseload will include not only monitoring and mentoring the ARFEP kids who are FEP in the last four years, and any others that need support. But also including the long-term English language learners and working closely with those teachers and kids. So it's gone fairly well at the high school this year, and we think we're ready to do it at the middle school as well. Okay, next slide. Any questions about the junior high? And I know Principal Miller is here with us.
Erin, would you remind me, who is doing the ARFEP mentoring on those two campuses?
Yeah, so at the middle school, it's been Erin Ryan as a, her dean position's 80% and the other 20% is, is the ARFEP mentor. That will likely continue next year. We still need to negotiate a couple of things with the union. But we were hoping, I mean, it makes sense that, that, that person is 80% dean, 20% now sole advisor. At the high school this year, it's been Carla Fortini.
Right. Thank you.
I, I think it's those changes at the junior high sound like just right, for lack of a better phrase. I, I think it's those changes at the junior high sound like just right, for lack of a better phrase, to be able to have a grade level English language, I mean, ELA teacher then turn around and apply the core content to ELD. Sounds like with additional support and training as you described. Yeah, it sounds great.
Okay, so the high school, you know, in my slide, right after Dr. Nichols talked, I had a refinement of ELD core sequences and composition for both the junior high and the high school. We are still in the planning stages, but the preliminary plan looks somewhat similar to the high school, pardon me, to the junior high. The hitch is that the numbers are much smaller, right? We get down to 30 kids we're talking about. And again, roughly five of them are newcomers and need a very different program than, you know, a student who is even a level, level two. We are trying to see if there's a possibility, what we'd like is to increase the FTE there as well. But there's some other master scheduling implications and just staffing that need to happen at the high school. We can, we'll continue the sole advisor. The, the numbers fuck, the, sorry, not the numbers, the, the number of students tend to be right around 30. But what grade level they are and what ELD status they're at, what, what level of ELD they're at fluctuates dramatically on us at the high school. And so I'll give you an example. We have a big cohort of ninth and 10th graders who are English language learners, who are right at that high level three, level four. We only have three that will be 11th and 12th graders next year. So this idea of cohorting solely by, by grade level, we just don't have enough kids. But we, we are looking at cohorting them by ninth and 10th and 11th and 12th. But even, even that's a little hard because we don't want to put an 11th grader who's a level four and about to RFEP in the same classroom with a 12th grader who's a level two. So just because they're the same grade doesn't mean, mean their English language development needs are the same. So it gets, it's a little stickier and a little more complex and takes, it takes us looking at each individual student, what grade level they're in and what their ELD needs are.
But the beauty of the standard, Erin, I could still see it happening just because the, the ELD standards are not grade level specific. They're nine, 10 and 11, 12. So this, so there's a little bit more flexibility at the high school level.
Yeah, yeah, but we only have three in 11, 12, right? And it's hard to run a section, an entire section for three kids. So that's, our number is so small. So, yeah.
Need to reclassify them.
Yeah, we'd love to if we took an LPAC. So that's the other thing that in here and that we're, we're trying to work on. We're waiting to see if we might be able to use some other standard assessment. So quickly, since it's here and I know Principal, or Trustee Del Rey, you asked about this earlier about what's happening with LPAC. So what we know today is that our junior high kids, 99% of them finished all elements of the LPAC and those tests will be scored. So yay, junior high. We're going to get junior high LPAC scores that can be used for RFEP and other, you know, other purposes like we're talking about here. Nobody else really got started yet, right? So like we, we, we just didn't, it's not even a matter of being done. It was that we weren't far there yet. So what we're hearing from the state is that they're trying to figure out a way to allow schools to administer the LPAC, the summative LPAC in late summer or early fall. So we get the scores, you know, before we're halfway through or even halfway through the, the, the semester. So we are looking at our kids right now and saying, okay, they had all three criteria except for LPAC. Do we think they would pass the LPAC if they take it in early to mid-August or, or early September? So we're, we've got kind of Plan A and Plan B depending on whether or not they, they are FEP. So that's, we think we're going to be able to give the summative though in the late summer, early fall.
And do you know if, do we have any students that scored a level four that have not yet been?
Sorry, can you say that again? I didn't hear you.
Do we have any students that have scored an overall four on the LPAC that have not yet been reclassified?
That's a great question. I don't, so you know, sometimes CASP holds them up.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if there's any that we could just support with whatever is the obstacle to get them reclassified.
Yeah, the principals would know better and I know that they look at that like, you know, that is a piece of data that they watch very closely, but I don't know off the top of my head, to be honest.
I'd be curious if we could get those numbers of how many students are, already have an LPAC four that are on the cusp of being reclassified.
Sure, let me make a note of that.
Thank you.
And maybe there's a way to do another, an update to the board about sort of what do we do, right? Like, we don't want to push kids that aren't ready, but if they are ready, we certainly want them to start next year in the right place. Is, maybe it's the data we, you just mentioned, Eric Selly, maybe it's some other things, but what is the approach? What is the strategy? I mean, it's, is it that? Is it all four?
Well, if you don't, if we haven't RFEP them, we're in it, they're going to get ELD. We, we have to do that.
And we really cannot RFEP without the LPAC test scores is what you're saying.
Not only that, but with, they have to have a four, they not, you know.
Four in the LPAC test scores, right.
Period. That's the one thing that the state has given us a very hard line on. And there is no, I asked Jen Guerrero at County Office again yesterday, like, they're not going to budge on that, are they? Okay, let's go to our next slide. Want to move us along, these are all a repeat from the, the deck that I used last month, but just reiterating and continuing to work with the principals around spotlighting ELD strategies at staff meetings and making that kind of a standing agenda item. You know, when you're a district that serves over half of your kids are bilingual, this is something that needs to be talked about and revisited very often. And so getting on board with that. Supporting instructional rounds, it's something we've talked about as a district, we've done here and there. We've never looked at it with a focus on integrated ELD. And so we really, in looking at that report, that's something that we all like. And, you know, whether you be a teacher or administrator, I think people who have taken part in instructional rounds understand how powerful of a professional development and kind of community building exercise that can be. So there's some excitement about that. Again, we feel like we've done some improvements to communicating RFET criteria with students and families. This year we got better at it and will continue to get better at it and holding, you know, individual meetings, group meetings, talking about it, making sure that families and students have the information that they need and feel comfortable with what that is and the process and how important it is and what happens and what are the criteria. So we plan to bring updates to you guys monthly. So again, in May, we'll do this and in the meantime, continue to ask your questions. And, you know, when you hear from community members and others, please pass it along to either me or the principals or whoever, the, the relevant folks who need to hear. Any, any questions?
No, thank you, Erin.
I appreciate the fact that I'm hearing that administrators are really wanting to continue to push even with our compromised situation in services or trainings or PDs around this. I think that's very encouraging. So the board's all about that piece, right? That PD piece, and we've come so far and worked so hard on this. We just want to keep on whatever we can for the instructors that have to actually make this happen. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Erin. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Erin.
Okay, moving on, item D, a resolution around the charter school dissolution.
So this is the, the next step in the merging the elementary schools. This would be the final resolution to close this charter school officially. You know, we've all but basically done that effectively through decisions that have been made in the past. So it's sort of a formality, but nonetheless, this is the official resolution that does so. So, and again, it is the result of the equity work that we've been engaged in for the last two years.
It does feel a little anticlimactic because it seems like all of the discussion, the big discussions have happened and.
Right, and I'd be remiss. If I didn't mention, the, the resolution was actually already adopted by the Charter Governance Council. So we would be passing this at the request of the Charter Governance Council, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we, before we start, I just, having been involved in the charter school from its inception, I really want to congratulate everybody who's been involved in that with the, with the kind of care and risk that they took in creating such a very powerful project-based learning format and community.
And they did great work and, and we are, I mean, this is a resolution to close it, but really what we're doing is we're adopting that exact project-based learning approach for all of our elementary students in all grades TK5, so.
So I really look at, I really look at that as being groundbreaking changes for us.
Yeah.
They started.
I'd like to second what Judy said, you know, it was set up to do project-based learning, et cetera, and we've done it well. The charter school has done it well and it's great that it's moving into the, the rest of the district. It's exciting, but again, I second Judy. Congratulations to the charter school. Good job.
Yeah, I agree. I, you know, like I said before, I was so, my very first, I don't think I was sworn in, but just seeing the evidence of the dynamic learning that students were getting, it was very impressive. Yeah, so kudos to the teachers and for preparing students so well. And I'm thrilled that all students will get to benefit from that amazing learning opportunity now.
I would love to see some information maybe shared with the community about that this is a celebration, that this, because I can see how it could be read as we're dissolving the charter school and there's a period at the end of that sentence. And that's real, I mean, yes, of course, that is technically what's happened, but I think understanding why and where it picks up from here and how it's going to move forward as one unified elementary school and program, I think it's really important to communicate out because to hear that the charter, you know, has, has been dissolved, I think is, can be, can be played in not the right light and I'd like to see some communication pushed out. Yeah. Celebrate the positive, like Judy has said, to celebrate those, you know, accomplishments and why. And here's how it's getting me that much better, taking what we've built. So I'd like to throw that out there.
Yeah, I would say we did issue a press release when we did vote last time to accept the action plan from the Elementary School Reconfiguration Committee. And, you know, I want to say thanks actually to Erica McGuire and everyone who was on that committee because this is again, that long work. But we did push out and I think there was an article in the Tribune and then there was an article that wasn't as celebratory as we hoped in the Press Democrat. That did finally come out, but it actually got usurped. I think it was because it came out much later, but anyway.
Well, I see that our journalist Catherine is online. Hopefully she'll pick this up and run with it.
Yeah, it is, it is something to celebrate. Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Comments? Otherwise it's a resolution.
Let's wait, give 10 seconds, see if any, anybody has a public comment.
See anything? Oh, I, there is.
Looks like there was a public comment. Does anybody want to read that? Do we need to read that out loud or?
After, but Crin, Crin said, Crin Frum said her two kids benefited greatly from the charter school. So agree that PBL will be a huge benefit.
Great.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve resolution number 20 dash 27.
I'll second.
This is a resolution, so Karen, a roll call vote.
All right. Trustee Del Rey.
I.
Trustee Velasquez. Trustee Kip.
I.
Trustee Roma Flores.
I.
And trustee Pat Mysel.
Hi.
All right.
Thank you, everybody. Item E, Marcy Becerra Academy Alternative Education Update. Over to Bill Halliday.
Hello, Bill Halliday.
Hey, Bill. Hey, everybody. How you doing?
Good.
Good to see you.
I, I miss you all. I want to begin by saying I appreciate and thank you for your positive comments about the staff and how they pulled together our program. All credit to our teachers. They've done a fantastic job and I'm really, really proud of them and thank you for recognizing in the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, this is my first round of doing this, though I've been living on Zoom for the last three weeks. Haven't done a presentation, so Karen's going to bring up a couple of slides for us and share. She's working on it. Okay. Okay, thank you, Karen. If you can go ahead and just go down to the next one, please. Okay, just I want to begin by reminding the board of some of the basic premises of the Big Picture Learning Model and why we're moving forward with that redesign for Marcy Becerra Academy. At the end of the slides, Karen has added the 10 distinguishers. And if you want to pop back and forth a little bit on your own screen and look at those, it's.
Can't do it.
Can't do it?
I can do it.
Okay, then we'll get to that at the end. Like I said, this is my first round doing this. The Big Picture Learning Model is an advisory model, meaning the teachers act as guides. In fact, in the model, they're not even called teachers, they're advisors. They act as guides and they work with the students for one, two, three and up to four years through their high school year, making sure that their student interest-driven plans are implemented. The instruction is community-based, it's real-world, experience-based. And the goal is to lead from student interest towards more successful participation in a high school program and a more successful foundation for life after high school. Again, some of the unfortunate motivations for this is many of our students in the current model with a high school diploma leave without real practical skills and readiness for the work world, where a majority of them go directly into. And some, of course, go into junior colleges and some go into other technical training programs, but a majority goes straight into the workforce. This model allows them to have better preparation for that. Okay, next slide, please, Karen. So what, what have we been doing? Board's been kind enough to join us on a few of our visits. We visited the North Bay Met and had a very inspirational day up in Auburn, California Confluence High School. It gave us a real good idea of what these schools can look like. It was very transparent that it's not a magic wand, but it does have the ability to capture students' attendance, attention, improve attendance and improve completion rates. The next step we've done is we've, we've formulated our own form, basically to develop a student interest plan. And this is the beginning of our current juniors in Marcy Becerra identifying what their interests are and what directions they want to take with this program in the future. We've been working with Connie and the counselors to identify and refer students into the program that are currently credit deficient and are in need of making up credit and also are demonstrating that they're disengaged with the high school program. And an alternative pathway would be beneficial to them. We've, Connie, myself and Michelle Scarborough, our teacher, our current teacher right now, have been involved in what's called an upstream collaborative and we are in weekly Zoom meetings with teachers quite literally from all over the world who are running big picture programs. And we discuss for an hour and a half a week about how we're doing online learning in our, in our different schools and we also discussed the model. Just this week. Just this week, our Tuesday, our Tuesday meeting, there was a gentleman from Northern Italy, a woman from Dublin, Ireland, a gentleman from Norfolk, the east coast of England, and a woman from Doncaster, plus folks from California and other parts of the United States all involved in this discussion. So very enlightening. Um, we've posted positions for next year. We're looking ideally to staff this with two teachers, if that is fiscally feasible. One teacher to focus on the English and Humanities, the other teacher to focus on the Math and Science. It's a little bit different than what we're doing right now, because a big part of the picture model and the distinguishers is that you really want to create a community of learners within the program. So the idea is that the Marcy students would take all of their course, all of their courses in Marcy Becerra, maybe not right at the beginning, but eventually that would be the model. And then we're doing a couple of classroom changes just to have a better classroom environment for the Marcy Becerra kids, and we're actually moving the auto shop classroom itself closer to the auto shop, and moving the Marcy Becerra classroom to another location. And next slide, please. Okay, what's the, what's the next step? We're looking to hire, we have internal and external postings are obviously out right now. We are keeping our fingers crossed that in the midst of this, folks are looking for exciting positions in our district, and we get some good candidates in there. We're identifying potential students, and again, Ever and Kelly, our counseling team, have been in contact with those students and their families about referring over to the program. And then we will be doing student interest plans for all new and returning students between now and the end of the school year, that'll be part of their distance learning process, and Ms. Scarborough will facilitate that. One of the natural benefits we have in Healdsburg to form this community-based program is that we have our internship program. For years, you know, there are mentors within internship program that come to Shelley and other members of our school community and ask for the students to have a longer internship or a deeper and richer internship, or they want to hire the student for a job. So I've been working with Shelley, identifying potential community members, and then hoping to pair them with some students who've developed their interest plans again by the end of the school year. If we're able to, we would like to have a team-building activity over the summer, if it's safe for our students and staff to gather and to have an activity-filled day just to get to know each other and set some goals, get to know each other again. And then we'll continue to collaborate with the Big Picture Organization and with other educators who are in the same process we are, or a year or two or five years down the line from us. And is there one more slide there, Karen?
The 10 descriptors.
Yeah, it's the 10 descriptors are there, and that's just, I'm not going to go through all these, all 10 of these, but I am going to say that it's, again, focus on student interest, focus on community, focus on the advisory model, and focus on competency-based assessment and real, real-world experiences. And again, you'll see the second to bottom piece there is about, that's a lot of stuff. The second part of the piece is about real-world transitioning.
There you go.
So, so Bill, I just want.
Yes.
I just wanted to remind you that Isaac Eggie said that he had, because he grew up here, lots and lots of contacts.
Yeah.
And for those internships, so. Call him.
Yeah, I will, you remember the story, his mom was my son's third grade teacher. So yeah, there's a connection. And we'll be working with Isaac, and Isaac is actually a very active member in my upstream collaborative group, and so we.
I'm sure he is.
We talk every week, so that's a good guy.
But, but he, he said he could name, you know, a bunch of people, so.
Yeah.
We should use him.
Bill, is there like a, it might be a weird question, but is there like a goal number of students? Or is there a, maybe the best of a maximum capacity of students that we think we could accommodate? This is a really in-depth, you know, person, resource-intensive program. You know, what's sort of an ideal number of students for this?
Sure, and I, ideal number of students, again, based on what the Big Picture shares with us and what other schools have shared with us, is to have two staff members, two roughly 30 students, so 15 to one ratio, which again, that's a very resource-heavy staffing, and I am very wide open and aware of the, you know, we may have some financial limitations in the future, and so that's the goal model, and we'll see if we can get there. Again, the advisors work with these students for, depending on how we go in the future, up to their full four years of high school. And so there's a relationship that's very rich and very deep that needs to be created for that to be successful.
Earlier in the presentation, you mentioned current juniors, but I don't, the context, is there a focus on juniors? You know, rising seniors kind of thing, or?
We have current juniors that are in Marcy Becerra right now. Roughly half of the students in the program are juniors, and the focus is, for them, is developing their plans for the coming year.
Gotcha, gotcha.
With them to do that. We also have sophomores that will be juniors next year that we've identified that are credit deficient, and it may be best for them to start the school year right away in the, in the program. We're really working hard on trying to do as much early identification as possible because there's kind of two tiers, and we have, there's kind of two tiers to this. One is the students who are credit deficient, and one of the students that we identify almost more anecdotally that you can see they have, they're starting to disengage, and in there, there may be a lot of failed classes, and we'd like to catch them earlier than just a credit recovery program has, and be able to model that may bring them back with us at a deeper level.
So Bill, that was a question, is it a fluid kind of program where students could go back and forth? Or how is it structured?
It's not going to be structured as a fluid program, because eventually we'll be coming forward to you with different graduation requirements, and again, the competency-based credit earning process is going to be very different in, in the new Marcy Becerra than it is at the comprehensive high. What, what, what we have gleaned from a couple of the schools is some students in their sophomore or junior year give it a try, and it's not the right model for them, and they, and they look for something else. So there is that level of fluidity.
And do you have feedback from the juniors that you're working with now as you're trying to introduce them to the program and do plan? Are they responding positively? Do they see this as a, as something they can engage in?
The, the most positive days in Marcy this year were the days that Lawrence, our picture consultant, came and worked with the teacher and the students about developing their plans forward. Absolutely the best days of the year, and they were much more excited about that than the, than just the standard program of credit recovery and going to their CTE classes. You could just, you could feel a change in their demeanor when they were talking about being able to be much more in control of their own educational design.
Cool, very good.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment? When we visited North Bay Met, I think it was President Del Rey and Director Fender, and I, I thought it was a great program. I am truly excited about this principal holiday. I think this, to make a difference, not just for the kids that are credit deficient, but for the kids, as you say, that, you know, that are traditional high school, not that I think our high school is traditional, but for the traditional high school, it just doesn't fit. It's exciting, I think you're going to have a lot of people wanting to get into this program. A lot of kids saying, oh, it doesn't work for me, I want to go help design my own life and be a more active participant. I think this is great, I'd like to see it go forward swiftly.
Yeah, and I do, I do want to be clear, Mike, and I do agree with you. I think we'll have students that are interested, but again, the focus will always be on students that are jeopardy of not graduating from high school.
And I agree with that, I just, I just can see the program, what we saw at North Bay Met, it's like, yeah. I, I had a son when, he's now 30-something, but he would have enjoyed that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank you. Any other questions?
Yep, very exciting.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, stay well.
Donna, I would like to propose that we do the next two items, and then following the junior high math presentation, take a short break, or actually have the reports and then take a short break.
Okay.
Does that work?
That works for me, does anyone else have an issue with that? No. Okay, so item F, history social science curriculum at the junior high. We have to unmute Aaron. Aaron.
There it is, all right, thanks Karen. I also would love to have Principal Miller unmuted, so, you know, if we were in the boardroom, he and I would be centering up to the podium together here.
I'm envisioning that right now.
Imagine that, so yeah, there, there he is, there's Mr. Miller.
Smile.
So we're pleased to bring this forward, you know, it's a little funny that we've got all these curriculum adoptions here, given where we're at, but business must go on, right? Education will continue, and we need to have.
Components, right, Aaron?
What's that?
They have online components?
Really? Is that like a big question now?
Well, you'll notice that's actually my third paragraph in, in the cover sheet for this, and TCI in particular is known and was one of the first to produce a robust online component many years ago. And, you know, I might just read this paragraph, and it's one of the reasons HUSD has been able to shift to distance learning so quickly during the shelter-in-place order. Because when we adopt curriculum, we, we tend to adopt, if it's high quality, both the print and the online materials. One, because we know kids need multimodal, they need paper, they need to flip through pages, they need to write with their hands, but they also need to engage in activities online. And I'll say, one of the reasons we were able to move so quickly as a district into distance learning is that we all, most of our curriculum is online, it has components online. So just thank you for, in the past, and hopefully now going forward, that when we make these purchases, that we get both, so yeah, thanks for that setup. So a little background of what got us here in, you know, late 2017, really early 2018, is when we started to see materials come out from the Instructional Quality Commission at the CDE and allowing our educators to start to flip through it. The high school went first, right, their subject specialist, they were hungry, they were ready, they said, we can't get it new stuff, you know, can we please get rid of it? They have Ronald Reagan as the last president in them, out of our classrooms. So last year, the high school engaged in their adoption and pilot process very quickly. They decided on TCI, and they've been happy with it all year. So when we began the adoption process at the middle school, PCI was one of two that we did a formal pilot of, and they piloted TCI during the first part of the school year and began piloting a second material the second part of the year. And I'm proud to, to bring this forward. What we're asking for is a six-year adoption of both the print and online material. I want to give Principal Miller a minute here to say any words or, you know, anything he wants to say.
I just wanted to say that this did go through our history department. They took a real hard look at both of the particular curriculum for adoption and they're unanimously behind the teaching.
Great. So this is a discussion topic, are there any questions or discussion?
No, you're going to bring this back on consent next.
Bring it back on consent?
Yeah.
All right.
To go ahead and instead of doing it on consent, but just so we can have, so we'd like to bring it back as an action item, rather than just throwing consent. So yeah, this is a discussion and then action, hopefully in the regular board meeting next, next month.
Great. So, that's what we'll do. Okay, all right, next item G is an action to adopt the junior high math curriculum that we discussed somewhat last month, but our discussion here, yes.
Yeah, more discussion here, and Karen, if you could go ahead and pull up the PowerPoint while I start to get us in this. So it's general practice when we make this large of a decision to, with the board, to do it over two meetings. Know that this has been a lengthy process over many, many years to get where we're at today for the middle school. So there were some questions raised by community members, board members, parents, and so we, we wanted to make sure that we address those questions publicly. Been able to have conversations with a few community members, family members of our students, but I think it's worth, worth talking about here in the, in the board meeting. So we'll have to go to the next slide. We also have, Karen, just a little reminder that Principal Miller and our eighth grade math teacher Gloria Hurtado are going to speak as well, so we want to make sure that their mics are open. So a little bit of process, and, you know, this is stuff that I live, but we got a lot of stuff going on, so bring our memory banks back to four years ago when we started the Math Innovation Design Team. And one of the big parts of that was to visit schools that had higher achievement or demographics to our, to our schools. What we found in the middle school environment was, was pretty interesting and a little unique, and that the majority of those middle, junior, high schools that we visited used college preparatory math. That was a surprise to us, right? It's unusual to see that curriculum across school districts in our region, further afield. Another, looking even further back, six years ago, when HUSD first reviewed and piloted Common Core curriculum, the junior high did not get a chance to review CPM. The previous superintendent had a bad past experience with CPM in Windsor, and so they, it wasn't even on the pile of material that they got a chance to review and to consider for pilot. So fast-forwarding to about two years ago, the, the math teachers at the junior high, all of them at the time, and, and now, asked if they could pilot CPM, even though we had a six-year adoption, right? We have an adoption that is to take us through next school year, the 2021 school year. But after visiting the other schools and taking a hard look at the materials that we had and the processes that we were working with our students, not just the print material, but, but how you guide math, how you understand math, what's called for in the Common Core state standards, wasn't all there in the Big Ideas curriculum that we currently have in, had in place. So they've spent the, the past, this school year piloting, and all three HH math teachers would like to adopt CPM. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Principal Miller jump in here a little bit about reasoning and helping us understand some process of where we're at today. So Principal Miller, you want to hop in here?
Sure. No, so we have been piloting CPM for the entire school year, and we have an experienced math teacher in Gloria Hurtado, who's also here with us tonight and can, and can chime in, who used CPM in her previous district. And we, we realize that we really do need something that is more rigorous and is able to be more fully aligned with the Common Core. And so we, we looked real hard at all the different curricula out there, and this one rose to the top. And I think it accomplishes what we are looking to do. We're, and we're also happy that it has the blessing, so to speak, of some of the experts that we call upon in our district, including Dr. Joe Bowler. So there's, it, it has a lot going for it. And as I said, I think we are ready to move forward. And we're all in agreement in terms of our three math teachers that this is where we want to move forward.
Gloria, can I invite you to speak on behalf of yourself and the teaching team at junior high?
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me with my headphones on?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. Um, I think really one of the biggest reasons why the three of us want to use CPM is just how our students are so willing to engage with the material. I think what CPM really does is it makes those connections between situations and the math concepts that we're that we're trying to teach them. And so they just have a way of breaking down these complex concepts into these type of problems that every student can engage with. And so with elementary school, we're really looking at project-based learning. But what's so neat about CPM is it really is problem-based learning. And so it really centers our students as the beholders of knowledge. And so they're tackling all these problems and then all of a sudden, these connections are made and the big ideas are coming out of these problems. So I think another reason why we really like CPM is it really does kind of preview what the high school teachers are doing. And so they're using the Math Visions Project for integrated math. And CPM is very similar in philosophies and ways of presenting curriculum and concepts.
And the nice thing about Ms. Hurtado is that she teaches integrated math, one, at the middle school now. So she actually uses the MVP material that our high school teachers, so she gets to see exactly what MVP has in it. And I thank you for that Gloria, that you really hold a special place in kind of knowing both buildings and both curriculums.
Yeah, so I definitely get a chance to see what's to come. And I think just CPM is a really good kind of preview as to what's to come at the high school level.
That's great. Great, thank you.
Could you give, I have a question?
Yeah.
This is from Gloria, actually. You said, let's see if I can, how, the connection between how they come to a big idea from a problem that they're working on. Could you give an example of that so I can?
Yeah, so one of my favorite problems is we're talking about how a tree grows. And that particular conversation leads us to how to make a table, how to make a graph. And then it leads to the eighth grade standards of like, how do we come up with an equation, this linear equation? So now we're talking about slope and we're talking about the Y intercept. And we're talking about all of these, you know, higher concepts. But at the end of the day, we've been talking about a tree the whole time. So those are the kind of connections that this book kind of, that this book makes for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Got it.
I need to be in your class Gloria.
That's awesome.
It's very contextual material, you know, it's, there's an X and Y and slope and axes, but it's, you know, from what I see in the classroom and what I've read and reviewed, there's always like a problem, like why do you use this math? What are you trying to figure out?
Exactly, exactly.
What is slope? Well, slope can be used to figure out the length of a tree and how much board feed is in it.
Oh wow. Thank you.
Do you want to just make, invite anybody from the public if they want to make a comment to let us know in the chat box right now? But any other questions from the trustees?
No.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Very exciting.
So we'll give a minute here if there's any public comment. We are asking for action today and approval for CPM to be the core adaptive material and take on the expense of adopting this curriculum for our middle school.
I would like to move that we adopt, what, CPM? I don't want to say the wrong one. CPM for our math curriculum at the junior high.
I second that.
Are there, no comments so far?
No, nothing.
And when would we have, when would you have the materials?
We have it. Yeah. So it's, you know, the nice thing about CPM is that we got everything for $2,500 that we needed. What this will allow us to do is there's an online component, a huge online component. So it's the, you know, the online subscriptions. And then we'll get a few more textbooks to make sure that the class set, and then if there's any students that need to have a textbook at home, so if the family prefers to have a textbook at home or internet connectivity makes it so they need to have a book at home. The materials are available in both English and Spanish too, so we do print all amounts of Spanish.
That's great.
Great, okay, great, thank you. That's exciting. Okay, it doesn't appear there's any other comments, so we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh Judy, you've muted.
Karen.
Are you, you and I? Judy, did you mute yourself?
Judy, you gotta give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Thumbs up Judy. Hi, are you muted? Or Karen, can you unmute Judy?
Yeah.
There she is.
You are.
I'm sorry, I had to, Lucy was was misbehaving in the living room and they needed to get Herman in there to rescue my living room.
Were you and I Judy?
It looked like you were just talking so much and we couldn't hear a word. Are you and I or no on voting?
I'm in high.
All right, so unanimous voting.
All right, I just want to thank Gloria for being here. I know it's.
Yes, thank you.
Joining us, thank you.
It's very insightful.
At least you didn't have to come in. At least you got to stay home.
It's always really insightful to hear from the teachers, so thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we're going to do reports and then take a short break, is that correct?
Yeah.
No, I thought we were doing the science.
We were gonna amend it to do the reports in the break right now and then we'll come back and do the rest of it. Is that okay?
Okay, so reports, HEF report, I don't.
I don't know.
Representative?
Hi, you guys, this is Ever.
Oh, okay, we'll go on to Hatta. Hello.
On to Hatta.
Oh, HEF report then, okay, that's fine.
Can I actually, give me 10 seconds? I want to, I'm not giving a HEF report, but in lieu of the HEF report, I want to recognize HEF because it was through their work over the last four years that we were uniquely positioned to be able to teachers to run with distance learning the way they have. If it wasn't for HEF support and purchasing Chromebooks, both from the John Jordan Foundation and the Moleman family, as well as then funding tech coaches very early on to give our teachers the opportunity to learn more about technology, as well as their funding through the John Jordan Foundation of our parent outreach coordinators who have been key in getting food and connectivity to our neediest families in this whole ordeal, we would not be where we are. So really grateful for what HEF has done. I know it's hard times fundraising right now, but I encourage everybody listening, if there's anything we can do supporting HEF, they've done a lot for us and our kids, especially in this crisis.
You can make online donations.
Yes.
It's a good time to make an online donation.
Yes, and a great time for a newspaper article about HEF and how they've enabled this for our students.
Yep.
Chris, you touched on this earlier, but they have refocusing and trying to get donations to buy more hotspots that we need. I mean, those are not expensive and are really so anyway, yes, agreed. All right. Hatta report.
Hi, well, thank you. I mean, I thank you to HEF actually. I mean, we're very thankful to be in Hillsborough in a place where our students have one-to-one items or, you know, technology. I know a lot of districts in Long Island County didn't have that before COVID-19. So I just want to reiterate what Chris said. And I only have two items that I want to talk to you about. It'll be very briefly. One is the 19 MOU. I think that we were able to work out, you know, an MOU that addressed the majority of the issues that educators were going through in these apparent times. I want to say thank you to the district for working out some of the kinks and and we realized that it's not perfect. You know, Chris and I argue about this all the time. He thinks it's perfect. I think we still need to tweak a little bit here and there, but I think it touches what we needed to do, both by protecting students and teachers alike. And I just want to say that it wasn't easy, but it was a amiable sort of meeting with the district in terms of agreeing to something that was for the benefit of the entire district, not just the association. So thank you, Chris. And then to the union, and I'm getting a lot of emails from teachers and my bargaining team, the union's looking forward to finalizing our negotiations as soon as possible. I know Chris and I discussed some dates and we're looking forward to see if we can re-initiate the negotiation talks by next week or the latest by May 1st. So I just want to keep you updated with that. I haven't shared our minutes or notes with Chris from our last meeting with him. I want to read them shortly so he can take a look at it. And I'd like to share with you guys what we talked about. So because I think not having Jessica, it's putting me at a disadvantage because she was very highly organized and that is falling on me right now. So that is all I have to report. Do you have any questions regarding the MOU or the negotiations?
No, but I know that the meeting where we approved the MOU, we did comment Ever that we appreciated the union's flexibility and agreement that it did, it went very quickly and came together and we really appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you Donna.
Yes, I agree.
And by the way, I have very, you know, spotty wifi, so I'm using my telephone so I can hear everything that you're saying. Otherwise, you guys get caught off every other sentence, every other word, so I don't understand. I have a screen and my phone, so I can hear exactly what you're saying, so I don't want to miss a word.
And Ever, if I can make a comment not on these two items, I wish you would express the board's appreciation, certainly my appreciation to all your unit members for the hard work they're doing. I know it's unusual circumstances. They rise way above my capabilities for sure. But we really appreciate their hanging in there, not only just hanging in there, but doing an outstanding job. I've asked the principals to convey that to the teachers, but I also ask you as the president of Hatta to let them know that we truly appreciate what they're doing.
Thank you, Mike. I'll send an email tomorrow. I'm planning. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Ever. And the counselors, I know you guys are doing extra double duty with trying to, you know, work kids through not only academics, but their personal lives right now. So thank you for that.
It's interesting to do counseling through Zoom, so.
Yeah.
So we thank you, you and Kelly.
Well, thank you. I'll tell Kelly that you guys sent her an email. I think you know, as well.
Thank you.
And that is it. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you. I know it's, I was telling Chris that this is very painful, you know, to be engaged in watching a screen. You know, I like to have the face-to-face conversations. All of the subjects are very, I mean, interesting to me, but it's so difficult to stay focused watching that, you know, looking at a screen. And I can only imagine what students are going through, you know, with their, you know, situations. So, well, thank you. And I'm gonna ask Karen to go ahead and mute this call. Thank you.
Thank you, Ever.
Is there a CSCE report tonight?
There is. I have a student, actually Alejandro sent an email that he wanted us to read, so I have his.
Yay, I was wondering how he was doing.
He says, "His internet is weak and he cannot handle Zoom all that well, so he hopes this letter is sufficient." "Due to the recent cancellation of site-based learning, students have learning and completing curriculum at home. Recently, a new grading policy was enacted in order to support students who either do not have internet at home, need to work, or have some other obstacle. The student population has been very thankful for that policy change. This allows students to focus on more pressing issues while still being able to learn without fearing they're going to fail. Cancellation of spring sports also hurt a large portion of students, for this was their final season playing their sport. Although there's nothing more that could have been done to prevent this course of action, it is still a sore spot for many. Many service projects have been canceled due to circumstances floating around. Lastly, we cannot mention student morale without talking about the seniors. 'I may sound biased here,' he says, 'but they have lost a great deal. Their senior trip, grad night, prom, and graduation are all hanging by a thread. These are once-in-a-lifetime events that most, if not all, on the board have experienced and are in jeopardy for the class of 2020. The worst part of this situation is the lack of control anyone has on it. Although we can try to fix and adjust, this situation we are in will stay irrational longer than we can stay solvent. Regardless, I'd like to thank you all for trying your best to work through the darkest of hours. I hope all of your families are safe and doing well, Alejandro.'"
Wow, how beautiful.
Yeah.
It's very nice.
Very nice.
Very nice. So any trustee reports?
You know, I have, I have a report, but I think I'll, I'll do it now. We're coming up to the California Day of the Teacher and the Classified School Employees Week. And I contacted Lorena Azvedo and the librarians have all sent their lists in to me for the books that we present to the individual school libraries in honor of them and our administrators, even though that takes place in the fall. And Karen is working on ordering those and I will, as soon as she has completed that, send you all a list of the books that are going to which library. But she's, she, in her email back to me, she said, "Thank you, thank you to all of the Board of Trustees for remembering to do this and how, what, how nice it was for them to do something sort of really library-like in this particular time. It was fun for them to sit down and figure out what books they thought would would bring pleasure to their students." So wanted to tell you how much they appreciated that.
Thank you for organizing that Judy.
Thank you Judy.
Thank you.
You so much.
You're welcome.
Any other board reports? Comments? Okay. So can we just do a five-minute? Do we need to do longer?
I think five's sufficient. Come back a couple minutes after eight, 8:03 or something.
Yeah, certainly. We want to restart by 8:05 for sure.
Best, you just mute and stop your video and then come back in and Karen can unmute us all instead of everybody trying to get back in all at once.
Okay.
Okay.
You'll just see an empty chair.
Right, or you can stop the video temporarily. Hey, we're being unmuted.
Right.
Still missing three though.
Okay, so what you're doing in the background is that every night at eight o'clock.
The howlers.
The howlers are out and they're always way out, right on my street.
And the dogs go crazy. I've never heard them.
Oh my god.
Okay, I forgot my glasses. I gotta go find my glasses. I'll be right back, sorry.
Well, yeah, because Florence, Florence is doing it and they're real loud.
She's howling along.
Not Lucy, Florence, street. The next street over.
Oh yeah, Florence, oh right, right.
We're going.
Yeah. We can hear it pretty loud.
Thank you, sorry. That's cool.
Herman went out one night and meowed.
He would.
Always contrary, huh?
Rebel.
He would. That's really funny. I can hear it.
It is.
I can hear it louder through your Zoom than at my house. That's pretty funny. Okay, Mike.
I'm back. Well, it's 8:03 just now.
Okay.
Now it's eight o'four. We have to move forward without him.
Just get started, it's okay. Totally fine.
So we're on to science correction option at the elementary school, HES.
So Karen, you need to unmute Erin's mic for this, I think.
Okay, so this is an action item. And remember, we discussed this previously last month. Lots of excitement about FOSS for the elementary. You know, as we, a couple highlights as we talked about before, we feel very strongly this will complement our project-based learning program for our K5 students. The hands-on equipment that FOSS has been known for for 40 years. The hands-on inquiry class has been known for for 40 years. I will say again, another shout-out, FOS made all their online materials available to us in the first week of shelter in place. We got an email specifically to our district. You know, we had some materials that we purchased over the years, a little bit of pilot, nowhere near what CPM had, but in that first week, we got an email that said, "Here's everything online for your district, because you're about to adopt." So that was, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah. They'll also be providing two six-hour professional learning sessions that we get to schedule. We get to choose when those are, they're for our teachers, so it's not that we have to go into somebody else's training, or they tell us the dates, we get to choose when and how those two six-hour professional learning sessions are provided to us. The cost of this does include, and I want to make sure that we, that we understand this, that it's the print materials, and those of you who've known FOS for a long time, it's, FOS has been kind of light on the print materials in the past, but in order to be compliant with NGSS and what's called for in the Common Core, particularly English Language Arts and Math Standards, they had to have more. So they have more and richer print material, so it includes all of that, all the digital, and all the live materials. So one of, and Judy, I see you shaking your head, one of the burdens of FOS for elementary teachers is that there's all this refillable stuff that comes, it's sand, it's bugs, it's, you know, leaves.
All pellets.
Yeah, all pellets. And that can be overwhelming for teachers to try to figure out what they need and how to organize the material. So our librarians will be in charge of annual refill, just like they are for all of our other.
Nice.
Yeah, so they're in charge of all of our consumables, of workbooks and everything else, so they will continue to help our teachers with the refill materials. So this is, this cost, you know, it's, it's not cheap, I'll say that, but it does set us up to make sure that we get that hands-on inquiry-based learning and that the teachers have the print, the digital, and all the live materials for them year after year after year, and they don't have to worry about going to the hardware store to pick up sand, because they forgot that it didn't, you know, it's gonna come in, in the refill materials that we're getting annually.
Erin, the refill materials, how many, how many years do we contract up for?
So, we are gonna pay for six, but we're gonna get eight.
Wow, nice.
That's very nice.
It's great.
Nice negotiating, Erin.
Yeah. Is six years pretty common for, or a commitment?
Six or seven is pretty normal, yeah.
Okay, folks, this is also, any other questions or comments?
We're excited. And I think the teachers enjoy teaching it, so.
Cool. Do we have a motion?
I move, I move, so move.
I'll second.
I will say that the specialists are saving us money, so we're buying kind of like almost half of the materials for FMC, because we don't have four classrooms teaching science, we have two, so we need more refill and little, you know, little more things here and there, but not nearly as much if we have four classrooms and grades. So we're able to, you know, FOS quoted us, so we're not buying more than we need.
Nice. It's very nice.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Thank you. Gloria doing this, but I'll be that for them. Gloria, you just made a bunch of teachers tonight very happy, guys.
Yeah. Love that. Okay, California Day of the Teacher.
So we do this every year, we recognize our teachers, and this year it is a particularly special recognition. You know, I can't, in a normal year, you can't say enough about what the teachers do, but in the given, in the circumstances that we're encountering now, the speed with which the teachers in Hillsburg Unified ramped up to create a distance learning environment for our students was amazing to behold. The compassion with which they are reaching out to students, connecting with them via Zoom, not only for learning opportunities, but just to check in on their kids. And that, you know, the way, Jamie Atwood was actually on this earlier, I think she jumped off, she's a high school math teacher, my son has her, just the language she has in her emails and how reassuring and understanding she is, and, and I know lots and lots of teachers are doing the same thing, is, has been great. And so I am really grateful for everything our teachers do, like I said, in a normal year, but particularly this year. That said, it's gonna be difficult to recognize them as we normally do. We usually buy some treats, and the admin buys them lunch, and they all eat together and celebrate, have various activities during this week. Franny, we, has become our point person on creating virtual opportunities for teacher recognition, so we will be, I have no idea what they are yet, but we will be recognizing them somehow. And of course, the trustees with the books that Judy spearheads every year will be buying for, for each library. So very grateful for our teachers and all that they do, especially in this current crisis.
So, I have a question. And Dawn and Araceli were going to write a letter thanking the teachers, and I'm wondering if that's been done, and.
It has not, Judy, yeah, but it will be very soon, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
And I know that we are gonna do some virtual recognition, which I think is great. I would like there just to be some thought put around, is there something tangible we could do for the teachers that might be out of the ordinary? It doesn't have to be super, you know, budget unfriendly, I would just like there to be some, you know, kicking around some ideas, what could be some things that we could do, do, actually tangible thing for them.
Well, that's, when I said virtual, it just means we're not all together, we're looking at different things, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll let us know?
Absolutely, yeah.
Ray, send your ideas.
Yeah, you have an idea, that's great, yeah.
And Jess says they love wine and chocolate.
Yeah. Not to be really specific or anything.
Wine not necessarily legal, but, yeah.
Why not?
I know it's a currency in Hillsburg, but we, yeah.
You could get Bordeaux chocolates.
So this is a resolution.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I so move.
Second.
All right, and Karen, a resolution roll call vote, please.
All right, trustee Kiff?
Aye.
Trustee Delray?
Aye.
Trustee Potmessel?
Aye.
Trustee Velazquez?
Aye.
And trustee Romo Flores?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's a, that's a nice, easy, good one to do tonight, okay. And Classified School Employees' Week item, sorry, I've lost my spot. Chris, back over to you.
Yeah, so very similar sentiments. I, again, we are very grateful for all of our classified employees, we have a great team, and in ordinary days, they do amazing work. And again, in the midst of this coronavirus craziness, they have stepped up to the plate, not only to serve our kids, but our community in a big way. They are the ones that are in the campuses, cleaning behind everybody who comes to make sure everybody's safe. So every single room in our school campuses has a log, you log in when you've been there, and then there's someone who comes behind you and cleans after you've left. They are the people who are serving food to literally hundreds of not only our kids and their families, but homeless folks in Hillsburg, and as well as serving other neighboring school districts on a daily basis, so they're on the front lines, a first responder of sorts. They're the ones calling families to make sure that they can get the free internet access and understand how to do that, and coaching them through it, as well as creating opportunities to get groceries to families. So that, just one last anecdote, we were a little short-staffed in food service and needed some help for food distribution, and asked for volunteers to come in and help from different job classifications, and we started at transportation and got five right off the bat. And so people are eager to help out, and folks are the ones that are literally physically on the front lines, serving our kids, serving our staff, serving our community, and just really grateful for all the work that they're doing. And again, as with staff, we'll be virtually recognizing, as with teaching staff, we'll be virtually recognizing our classified and finding some tangible ways to, to recognize them too, and Franny's working on that, so.
Great, that'd be great. Yep, here, here.
Outstanding.
Yep.
A motion to approve the resolution of recognition, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Who was second?
Judy.
Judy, thank you. So, let's see, trustee Kiff?
Aye.
Trustee Delray?
Aye.
Trustee Potmessel?
Aye.
Trustee Velazquez?
Aye.
And trustee Romo Flores?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, I wanted to stick a little, a little nugget in your head. One of Franny's ideas is that me and you all would create a video recognizing, you know, saying some nice things about the staff, so be on the lookout for that.
Can we make a TikTok?
No.
You guys, I think that'd be great from the Board of Trustees, Superintendent, no, the Board, absolutely.
Choreography?
I personally think that we should do a Zoom, all six windows, with everybody saying something, I think that would.
Oh, now we're getting public.
Great idea.
We could all play an instrument, except we can't all play an instrument?
Ever is, Ever's calling for a dance video, so we'll see.
The floss. That could be bad. Well, we're in, Franny, we're in, count us in, we'll do it, we'll do it.
Like, how square can we look?
Okay.
Can we do that?
Eleven-one. Eleven-one, A.
Wait, wait, hold on. Hold on, Karen's asking.
I'm sorry, how can we do that with all of you at the same, same time without it being a board meeting?
All right, we can't.
So I'm thinking, why don't we do it at the end of the, end of the next special board meeting?
Or we can do individual videos and patch them together.
Yeah, because we're not talking and discussing anything.
We can do that.
We can just dance anytime we want to. Doesn't have to be a board meeting.
You have no idea when I dance, so.
All right, sounds good.
Beginning to think.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, okay. The intern agreement with Cal State Long Beach for social work. School of Social.
Erin, if you could mute.
Thank you. Sorry, Franny.
So, I'm not sure.
There we go.
Just me, hi, if you just want me to talk, or if you want to, Diane.
Oh, no, yeah, absolutely, Diane, also, please, yeah.
Because Diane can probably speak better to it, but this is basically an agreement so that we can move forward with bringing on our two MSW interns next year.
And I just want to also mention that Alex is also on, on here, if you guys, anything from him?
Great. All right, great. Diane, do you want to speak more specifically?
I just want to say that if Alex is here, you know, I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that he did in securing these interns, so they weren't an easy thing, it's a very competitive process, and he really did the outreach and the legwork into establishing a brand-new relationship with this organization, so we're very excited. We have two MSW candidates who will be interning for us full-time next year, primarily placed at the elementary, and we just think that they're gonna be an excellent addition to our staff and also a great benefit to the students.
That's wonderful.
It is. Thank you, Alex.
How does this work, if they're in school in Long Beach, how, how does this all work?
They're distance learners.
Satellite program in Santa Rosa, so.
Yeah.
It's very, it is so needed and very, very nice to have social work.
Alex, our student trustee, or who?
No, Alex, he's our behavior specialist, also in MSW, and.
Oh, got it, okay, like, who, which Alex?
I think, I might have said this before, but I think it's really, I mean, it's great that they're masters in social work, that these aren't interns that are 20 years old and not, you know what I mean?
Pardon me?
Sorry?
Said, although we'll take them too.
Yeah, but I mean, people with a limited experience, that's a good thing, right? It's, I mean, that's a more valuable thing, I think, for us, so that's great.
Yeah, and it's also important to know that both of these candidates also really want to work with students, they really want to work in the school system eventually, so we just are very lucky for them to be placed with us, and, you know, for all of the pieces to come together, so.
Great.
Thank you, Alex.
Great, thank you, Alex.
I was reading through this, and I don't see approximately, how many hours a week are they at the schools?
I think each one, it equates to, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, it equates to a one full-time person if we take away sort of their supervision hours and just sort of account for the direct service that they'll be providing. So it kind of is about 32 hours, I think, a week between the two of them.
That's great, that's great.
Could someone read the comments? I think they were, was a good question.
Ever, ever actually asked a question if one of them was by, when Alex is on, and answered right away that one of them is, so that's a huge resource for us, so, yeah.
Excellent.
And again, thank you to Alex and Diane for sharing this, it's gonna be a huge addition and a great service to our kids, especially coming out, I mean, given the whole world is experiencing COVID-19, but in Sonoma County, we've, we've had our, our run here between fires and now that, so I think our kids have more obstacles than most, and have counseling available, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Excellent. Do any other comment, and if not, do I have a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And school buses?
School buses.
Oh, wow, I'm sorry, I even have my glasses on, school business.
Both school buses are school business.
Buses could be business.
Yeah, well, the buses follow the calendar, so.
Wow, I don't know, wow, okay.
So we do have a change, we had brought the calendar to you originally with a start date of August 12th, and after some discussion and some analysis, we realized that if we start on August 12th, finals in high school would have been the day, the start the day after Memorial Day in May, and as we all know, FFA, FFA weekend in Hillsburg is maybe the biggest event of the year. It is absolutely the wrong time to have finals for high school. And so after some discussion and talk with Bill Halliday, and then more, more discussion with Hatta, we're bringing this calendar, this would be our final calendar for you to approve. It does have a starting a week later in August, which at this point might be a good thing to put more time into the school year than the beginning.
Yeah, good point.
And it allows us to have a week separation, so we can kind of have a dead week after FFA weekend, and then start finals. So we'll go a little longer in June. The one little issue that arose out of this is the city was already out with their rec calendar for camps, which I don't know if they'll be able to have summer camps this summer. And so I talked to them about potentially offering an extra week to make up for that week going later, and they said it's not a problem, so if they are able to offer, they'll be able to offer a camp during that extra week, so.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so we haven't put in all the, you know, the days at the beginning of the year yet with new employee orientation and staff development days and whatnot, but that's easy to do, so we're bringing the calendar here just in an effort to get it to families as soon as possible, so they know how to plan their summers, although I don't think anyone knows how to plan their summer at this point.
Yeah.
Anyway, a little later start this year.
That feels nice.
And we do have the three fire day buffer days, so we have the extra day, because we're 181 days. We have January 4th, which is a professional development day, that if we need, need to switch it because of the loss of a fire smoke day, and have it become a student day, and then we have that April 5th holiday, which would be the Monday after Easter, that would be off if we didn't need to make it up, but if we did, we can just take it and have it as an extra day, so three days to make up for any lost instructional time.
We're not gonna have fire, we're gonna have locusts.
She's kidding.
Yeah, well, the river already turned red.
An earthquake.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so those three, those three days are, as of this point. So, so those three, those three days are, as of this point, just vacation days, no school days, but we can.
One is a, a student day. We already get a freebie because we go, it's not a freebie, but we're than required, right?
Oh, I see, just a day.
One day is a professional development day that'll become a student day if we need to, and then the other is a vacation day, so.
Okay.
It's really only.
And is that clear on here for parents that those emergency makeup days, that that's?
They're right at the top on the right-hand side, potential.
I see that, but it doesn't really say, those could become school days if we need.
Good point. It's not that clear.
We can.
It just talks about days.
Having some language at the link, so they see it, but we'll make sure.
Point, Donna.
Yeah, I mean, like, what does that mean? That mean we have them or we don't have them? And yeah, okay. And when does that get triggered? Like, you know, when, when would they be notified about that?
Be nice.
Could be the day before, but like April 5th, you have potential emergency makeup day. If I'm a parent, I'm going, does that mean they go or don't go?
Exactly.
That would be, the question is like, day off slash potential makeup day. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, we'll clean it up.
Yeah.
And it's going to be early, right? Fire seasons to November.
It's going to burn the flu, yeah.
Right. Although, who knows what the reasons could be for those makeup days?
Yeah, who knows, but.
The locusts. We could have a locust day.
Okay, we're up with natural disasters. Okay.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, don't, don't beg for it.
I, I do think, rather than in the link, I think it should be on the document because I don't.
Make sure it's, we'll make sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. All right, so information or questions from governing board members? Folks?
No, I'm glad we're starting later.
We don't have a recess to close session, I believe. We didn't have any comments to.
Do we vote on this?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're waiting for the discussion about the buses.
I moved the calendar.
Thank you. And the buses.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, anybody opposed? No. I do that because I don't want to make sure, I just want to make sure.
I think that's good.
I think it's a good thing.
On Zoom. You're a good president.
Because I can't watch like six windows at once, I'm sorry.
But I do think that we should take turns voting no on something.
Donna has total.
Just to see.
As president.
Just to.
I might have voted no on buses. You never know. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we can release you all back to your exciting lives at home.
What, what am I going to do?
I don't know.
Do we, do we know what our next meeting is, everybody? Do we have a meeting date?
We have a meeting next week.
May 20th.
May 20th is our next regular meeting. We haven't set up a date for next week, but we'll get it to you shortly, so.
Thank you. And Karen, do you want me to just pop in and sign things? I, I can easily do that. You can leave them on the front desk and I can sign them tomorrow. I mean.
Um, let's.
I can even walk over.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I just don't know who will be here, so I'd rather like, I'm, I'm wondering if we could set a time on Friday?
Sure, sure. I'll totally fine.
Okay.
Just text me and give me like a couple hour, hour window and I'll walk over and sign whatever you need me to sign.
Okay.
I don't know what anybody else's calendar looked like, but mine's got some erasures from canceled appointments, but otherwise it's just blank.
Yeah, exactly.
It's blank. I didn't, I didn't cancel my appointments. I left them in there, so I feel like I'm doing something, even though I'm not going.
Or they'll make you just feel worse because you can't.
That's depressing.
I don't know. Depends on how you luck at it, right?
Oh, my gosh, erase stickers.
Well, we're just going to hang around now because we're enjoying ourselves.
What are we going to do?
No, I'm going. I'm going.
All right. Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.